During the current state of emergency due to COVID-19, council members will be participating online and the public will not be able to physically attend today's meeting. To participate in the general public comment period, please call now at 818-238-3335. Members of the public may speak for up to three minutes depending upon the number of speakers.
Good evening and welcome to a regular Burbank City Council meeting on Tuesday, January 25th, 2022. Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Our city treasurer, Crystal Palmer, will lead us in the pledge. Welcome, Madam City Treasurer.
Please place your right hand over your heart and join me in our Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Madam City Treasurer. Madam City Clerk, please conduct the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Looking here, Councilmember Frutos.
Here, happy to be here.
Thank you. Councilmember Schultz.
Present.
Councilmember Springer.
Here.
Vice Mayor Anthony.
Present.
Mayor Telemontes.
Present.
Thank you.
There will be one period of general public comment tonight. If you would like to participate, please call now at 818-238-3335. Callers will be placed in a queue until we begin public comment. Let me repeat that number again, 818-238-3335. Tonight's council meeting will be adjourned in memory of retired Burbank Fire Captain Ron Bell. Captain Bell passed away on December 12th, 2021, at the age of 71. Mr. Bell had a 35-year career with the Burbank Fire Department that started in 1976. He completed paramedic training in 1981, where he took great pride in delivering compassionate care to our community as a firefighter and paramedic for 15 years. Captain Bell promoted to Fire Captain in 1996, serving the citizens of Burbank for an additional 15 years as an engine company captain, as well as in the Fire Prevention Bureau in the Television and Film Office prior to retiring in 2011. Mr. Bell loved the tradition of the fire service and was a proud member of the Burbank Fire Department muster club, where he assisted in the care and maintenance of our antique fire apparatus and equipment. Joining us tonight to say a few words honoring Captain Bell is Burbank Fire Chief Eric Garcia. Chief, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council, and thank you for the kind words that you shared about retired BFD Fire Captain Ron Bell. And I know while COVID still limits us in honoring Captain Bell in person, I'm very glad that his family is able to attend virtually. As you mentioned, Mr. Mayor, Captain Bell served our community for 35 years, and he truly loved being a firefighter. He so very admired as well the tradition of the fire service and was definitely one of our department's best pranksters. Ron had a tremendous amount of knowledge and experience, and I know that he loved being a paramedic and very likely would have been content closing out his career as a paramedic. However, right about the time I came on, he decided to promote to the captain's position. And it was shortly thereafter that Ron was my captain, and I had the good fortune to spend a real long stretch riding both Engine 11 and Engine 14 together with him as U.S. members. Ron also transitioned into the Fire Prevention Bureau, where he had helped transform our film office. He was instrumental in creating strong relationships with, working relationships with our partners at the studios and had a great way of really finding the way to meet the needs of the production without sacrificing the safety of the cast and crew. And lastly, as was evident in the PowerPoint, Ron was an avid fisherman, and he was a great big part of a big group of our firefighters that would attend the trout opener every year. Ron loved his family, he loved the fire service, and loved serving the community of Burbank. I learned a great deal from Ron, and I will be forever grateful for the guidance that he imparted to me. Ron has left a lasting legacy in the BFD, and on behalf of the men and women of the Burbank Fire Department, I'd like to extend my condolences to the Ron Bell family. Captain Ron Bell will definitely be missed. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Chief. Council conveys our deepest condolences to the family and friends of Ron Bell and to all those in the Burbank community who had the honor of working with him. We also thank him for his 35 years of service to the Burbank community. I also want to take this opportunity to recognize January as a firefighter cancer awareness month. Firefighter occupational cancer is the leading cause of lineup duty deaths in the fire service. It is important to provide firefighters the necessary tools and guidance to develop life-saving protocols for cancer prevention and to support those with a cancer diagnosis within their departments. Once again, rest in peace, Captain Bell. Tonight, we have three announcements this evening.
The following are announcements for January 25th, 2022. The Burbank City Clerk's Office is accepting applications for one vacancy on the Art in Public Places Committee for an unexpired term ending July 31st, 2022. The deadline to submit an application is Wednesday, February 2nd at 5:00 p.m. If interested, apply online at burbankca.gov/BCCapplication. For more information, please contact the Clerk's Office at 818-238-5851 or email The Burbank City Clerk's Office is accepting applications for five positions on the Charter Review Committee. The term is contingent upon completion of the Charter Review. The deadline to submit an application is Wednesday, February 2nd at 5:00 p.m. If interested, apply online at burbankca.gov/BCCapplication. For more information, please contact the City Clerk's Office at 818-238-5851 or email Join the more than 500 people who have already downloaded the new R Burbank 311 mobile app. The app improves how residents obtain important city information, report problems, request services, and connect with their local government. You can download the app from the Apple iTunes Store or Google Play Store by searching R Burbank 311. We have a video to show you how it works.
Hi, I'm Mr. Bob Cat, and I live and work right here in Burbank, and I'm excited to share with you the launch of the R Burbank 311 mobile app, an app that will improve how Burbank residents and businesses connect with their city and request services. To get started, download the app from the Apple or Google Play Store by searching R Burbank 311. Once you create an account, you can submit city service requests, like this resident here who needs help with the disposal of an old chair. From the Service Requests menu, she'll select bulky item pickup, fill in the missing information, provide a photo, and click Submit. The request will then be reviewed by a city employee and routed to the correct department. Once assigned, city crews will go to the site and complete the bulky item pickup. And a great bonus is that account holders can keep tabs of the progress of their requests all within the app. Pretty cool, huh? And it's not just for bulky item pickup. You can report graffiti, potholes, request homeless services, and many more items are on the way. Using the R Burbank 311 mobile app is so simple. Download it today. Catch you on the flip side. Bye.
This concludes the announcements for this evening.
Don't forget, R Burbank 311. So as a reminder, if you would like to participate in general public comment, please call now at 818-238-3335. City Manager Hess, do you have anything to report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I do. I actually have two items. The first item, I'd like to call up Captain Dennis Kremins to provide a brief report on an incident that occurred at the start of the year at Buena Vista in Burbank.
Good evening, Mr. Telemontes, the rest of the council. I'm Dennis Kremins, and I was at the scene to, so I want to walk you through what happened. It's essentially a traffic accident that happened the early hours of New Year, about 10 minutes after midnight. So I wanted to walk you through what happened and how we became involved other than the investigation aspect of it. One of the parties connected with it, a relative, has expressed frustration at the process. So I just want to offer clarity to you, Mr. Mayor, as well as the rest of the council. So at 13 minutes after midnight, a call was generated for a major traffic collision at Buena Vista in Burbank. It was just south of Burbank on Buena Vista in the 3500 block. Within four minutes, we had several units there, Burbank Police Department units, as well as a uniform supervisor. Another minute after that, the Fire Department was on scene, although they weren't needed. There was nobody injured. I was out there very shortly after that. 21 minutes after that happened, the driver, the impaired driver, was in custody and being transported to St. Joe's for treatment and for a blood draw. The case was investigated, was submitted to the city attorney's office, where it's currently under review, awaiting toxicology results right now. I think what happened was the mother of the person whose car was hit, a parked car was hit, it was overturned, and then the driver continued southbound, hit three other parked cars. So she was taken into custody, and as I say, it's been going through the process. I think the mother of the owner did not, of the car that was overturned, didn't understand the legal procedures. I can tell you Lieutenant John Fromer, who is in chambers tonight with me, has had extensive conversations with the family, and I'm happy to report, I think any concerns have been resolved to date. As recently as this evening, Lieutenant Fromer talked to the concerned constituent, and she expressed happiness she was able to talk to one of the prosecutors in the city attorney's office, who explained how the prosecution goes, you know, the evaluations that are made, and how to apply for restitution. So I don't want to go into a lot of detail, it's still a criminal investigation, yes, underway, but that's the gist of it. But if you have any questions, I'd be happy to entertain them.
Colleagues, you have any questions? I don't. Thank you, Captain Kremins.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Lieutenant Fromer, for being here as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have one more. I am going to call on our Emergency Management Coordinator, Eric Baumgartner. I have some good news, or he has some good news about, we've been pursuing a COVID testing site here in the city, and he's going to provide the latest update on that. There he is.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Eric Baumgartner, Emergency Management Coordinator, City of Burbank Fire Department. Real quick, just want to give you as an update on where we're at COVID-wise, and then I'll get into our testing. So countywide, the county peaked on January 16th at about 43,000 daily cases. Since the peak, the county has been seeing a seven-day average of new cases decrease at a trajectory which mirrors the downward trajectory seen on the East Coast, which peaked about a week before LA County and California as a whole. So our case rates are getting better as we progress through. Real quick, current vaccination status within the city of Burbank. I want to report good news since our last update three weeks ago. Across all categories, we have seen about a 1% to 2% increase in the number of people vaccinated. So those five years of age and older that have received one dose, fully vaccinated or fully vaccinated plus a booster, all those have gone up by at least 1%. Same thing with 12 and older, and then our 65 and older has also gone up. I'd like to report that with our 65 and older, for the fully boosted with a, fully vaccinated with a booster, that percentage has actually jumped 6% since our last presentation. So in three weeks, we've gained 6% in our seniors being vaccinated plus being boosted. There continues to be a steady decline in vaccinations being administered to Burbank residents, so I do want to point that out. As we forecasted in our update three weeks ago, rates have started to decline and will continue over the following weeks. We'll most likely see small peaks and valleys in the immediate weeks as the decline continues. In order to increase available testing to the community, the city of Burbank has been working with the Curative organization to establish a community testing site here in Burbank. Curative is one of the county testing partners. Curative is currently doing a needs assessment and analysis that takes into account testing projections as well as other current testing locations within the community. Based on these results, the testing site will be established at one of Burbank's parks and recreation locations. Possible locations include Georgia's A Park, Rodrigo Park, and Ralph Voie Park. These results will also determine how many days a week the test site operates and what the specific hours of operation will be. These days and hours can vary during inclement weather and may increase or decrease as demand for testing ebbs and flows. Once necessary agreements and logistics have been worked out, the city will advise a site location and hours of operation on the city's website and across all social media, and the site will also be listed in the directory on the county's testing information website.
Thank you, Mr. Baumgartner. City Manager Hess, anything else?
That's all. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for the update. So, Mr. City Attorney, will you please report on closed session?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. For the public, the city council met this evening in closed session to discuss one item under real property negotiations, Government Code Section 54956.8. They met with the city's negotiator concerning 1250 East Harvard Road, known as the Castaways. Council took no reportable action.
Thank you, sir. Now is the time for general public comment. Members of the public may address the council for up to three minutes on any matter concerning city business. Remember to lower the volume on your TV or computer and take your phone off speaker when you deliver a public comment. To participate, please call 818-238-3335. 818-238-3335. Madam City Clerk, do we have any callers online for public comment?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I do have one caller.
Welcome.
Our first caller is Jamie Keizer.
Good evening, Mayor Telemontes, Vice Mayor Anthony, and Councilmembers Frutos, Springer, and Schultz. It's Jamie from the Burbank Chamber of Commerce, and I'm here to share information about an upcoming event, What's Brewing in Burbank. This is a new chamber concept offering business networking opportunities with key community topic speakers in uniquely, unique locations throughout the city. On February 10th, we're gathering at the Hotel Amorano for a coffee chat, and I'm excited to report our topic speakers, our new mayor, Telemontes, and official new police chief, Albany. We hope you can join us, and for more information and to sign up, please visit the Burbank Chamber of Commerce website. If we have to pivot with our date, we will share more information with you. I'd also like to take this opportunity to say thank you to two council members, Sharon Springer and Mick Schultz, for the recent physical meeting we've had addressing priorities within our cities and ways in which we can work together for further support for our community. It's been a true pleasure working with each of you, and I just wanted to share this with everyone tonight. That's all I have to say. Thank you so much, and I look forward to hearing more within tonight's meeting. Thank you, everyone.
Next caller.
Mr. Mayor, I do not have any more callers on the line, so it's safe to move forward and close it.
Okay. Thank you. There being no further public comment, I now declare the public comment period closed. Now is it, now is the time for a brief response from city council, the city manager, and/or the city attorney. Colleagues, any response? Councilmember Springer?
Thank you to Ms. Keizer for the shout-out.
Thank you. Councilmember Schultz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say thank you as well to Ms. Keizer. The chamber continues to thrive under her leadership, and congratulations, Mr. Mayor, as being one of the featured speakers at their next What's Brewing in Burbank thing. I hope to attend.
Good. We'll see how it goes before we do any shout-outs. Okay, well, thank you very much, everyone. There being, let's see here, now is the time for a brief response. We've gone through that. Consent calendar may be enacted in one motion. Madam City Clerk, please read the consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First item on the calendar is City Clerk's Minutes, and those are for the city council meeting for January 4 and January 11, and also the dark meeting of January 18. Item 2, Approval of Memorandum of Understanding with Southern California Association of Governments for the 430,000 Regional Early Action Plan Grant to Update the Media District Specific Plan. Item 3, Adoption of Resolution Revising the Specification for the Classification of Assistant Community Development Director Building Official. That concludes all the items.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. And I just want to remind everybody, that's for $430,000 from SCAG, so that's a lot of money. It's a good grant. So a motion to approve the consent? Councilmember Schultz?
So moved.
Councilmember Springer?
Second.
Second, okay. There's been a motion, a second?
Councilmember Schultz?
Yes.
Councilmember Springer?
Yes.
Councilmember Frutos?
Yes.
And I am looking for Vice Mayor Anthony.
I don't know what's going on with my screen. Can you guys still hear me?
Yes. Okay, so that, I'm taking the vote for the consent calendar?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And Mayor Telemontes?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. There are three reports to council this evening. The first report is the introduction of an ordinance to manage parking at off-street city lots and structures, and adoption of a resolution to update parking violation fees in preparation for implementing a MetroLink station parking management plan. Mr. David Kriske, Assistant Director of Transportation and Planning, please present the report, and welcome.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the city council, David Kriske with the Community Development Department. As you stated tonight, I'd like to present to the council with a potential update of the ordinance to manage off-street city parking lots in preparation for future parking management at the downtown MetroLink station. I have a brief presentation to review where we are with parking management and then be available for questions. I'm going to share my screen now. Oh, or actually, it's going to be run for me. Thank you. So next slide, please. So for tonight's presentation, I'm going to review some of the city council's previous direction to staff in regards to parking management and review the parking management plan. This is kind of the high-level plan that we've discussed with the council over the last 18 months to two years. Then I'm going to talk about tonight's proposed code amendment, what it will do and what it won't do, and then proceed with the recommendation. Next slide, please. So in review, the city council has taken several steps to implement parking management and to set the stage for future efforts in parking management. In 2019, the city council adopted a set of citywide parking management principles, and these are high-level principles that guide the city and the staff in how to manage parking throughout the city. There are several elements to these principles, and one of the elements is better management of our lots and structures, particularly at our MetroLink stations. And then building upon the parking management principles, in February of 2020, the city council approved a parking management plan. This was the council's direction to begin parking management at the MetroLink station to resolve at the time were several issues related to lack of management, including the inability for transit users to park at the station, the station's parking to overflow and reach capacity often throughout the day, and to potentially raise some revenue with that management to better support the MetroLink station. And then in August of 2021, the city staff returned to the council for an implementation plan and a set of steps to actually begin parking management. But as you know, this was, continued to be during the height of the COVID-19 pandemic. Transit ridership and parking lot utilization at the MetroLink station was very, very low and continues to be low, and the council directed staff to delay implementation for those reasons, because there was such a low utilization at the station, and the council felt that beginning parking management was not appropriate at that time. So that's the history of parking management, but we're here back before you this evening to at least take potentially a first step at resuming our efforts. Next slide, please. So as you may recall, the city council in adopting the high-level parking management plan for the station identified four objectives with implementation. The council wanted to ensure that convenient parking was always available for MetroLink users, no matter what time of the day or how you were arriving or departing the station, that parking should always be available. At the same time, the council asked that we allow non-transit users to park, so transit users is of course the priority, but if we have excess capacity at the lots, we should allow non-transit users to park to utilize the lots for surrounding businesses, downtown activities, or other, or other reasons. The council wanted to discourage long-term abuse of the parking lot. That means that we minimize things like abandoned cars, folks using the lot for extended periods of time, not using the lot for its intended purpose to support transit, those sorts of things. And then finally, the council wanted, set an objective to identify surplus parking, because we believe that once we manage the parking effectively at the MetroLink station, there may be an opportunity to use surplus parking for other uses, to support other uses in the area, either at the station or nearby, nearby transit-oriented development opportunities. So that was the high-level objectives for managing parking at the MetroLink station that we discussed previously. Next slide. When we, when we came to you in August with the full implementation plan, there were three actions the council needed to take to implement parking management at the MetroLink station. You needed to amend the Burbank Municipal Code to allow for the management of the station under the new parking principles that the council established back in 2019. The council needed to approve the actual parking management system and establish fees for managing the parking and charging for parking at the MetroLink station, and then the council needed to procure the services of a parking operator to act- the council needed to procure the services of a parking operator to actually manage the program, collect the revenue, manage the lot, and conduct the enforcement, or at least provide data for the enforcement. Next slide, please. And so, as I mentioned, in August 2021, the council wanted to delay that action. We are back here this evening to at least resume steps to prepare ourselves for parking management. So, tonight, we propose not to implement all three of those actions that you considered back in 2021, but to actually take the first step and implement the first action, which is to amend the Burbank Municipal Code. Next slide, please. And so, what does that mean? The proposed code amendment that is under consideration tonight and which would be the first step of the three steps needed to implement parking management would add new parking regulations for public parking lots. So, it is modernizing the laws for which, that manage how lots and structures, public lots and structures operate in downtown Burbank, and it allows the council to define future parking fees in line with the parking management principles when the council's ready to go with parking management. So, it sets the table for implementing parking management in the future. It does not establish parking management per se, but it sets the table in our code to allow the council to consider that in the future. The other thing that it does, it sets the operational rules and penalties for how you use a parking lot. It clarifies that, carries over some language from existing code, but also clarifies those laws, and then removes outdated regulations relating to meter districts, parking meter districts of which we no longer have any. And if the council were to pursue on-street parking management and meters, we would come back with a modern ordinance for that. So, we can remove these outdated regulations in the code, which no longer applicable. And I just want to remind the council, tonight's staff recommendation does not implement parking management. Future council action would be required to do so. Next slide, please. In addition to the ordinance that's before you this evening, there is a minor resolution that the council should also adopt at the same time, and what it does is it just basically translates over the penalties and fines that relate to parking and over-parking at our lots and structures, translates those rules and those fines over to the new ordinance. So, we're not adding any fines or fees, we're not changing any fines or fees, but we're just establishing and translating the existing fees over to the new code. And so, that is needed to fully implement and begin parking management under the new code. And again, it does not establish paid parking yet. This is setting the table for a potential future action. Next slide, please. And so, the next steps in parking management, if the council wished to pursue the staff recommendation this evening, would be to introduce the proposed ordinance that you have, is before you today. If approved, we would adopt the ordinance 31 days later, and then we would continue to monitor demand at the MetroLink station. COVID marches on, and our demand at the station is still low, both in terms of ridership and parking, and so, we recommend that we continue to monitor that demand, and when we see some uptick in that demand, resume. Hopefully, COVID really starts to translate from a pandemic into just a background situation that we're controlling, and in-person office activity and other economic activity resumes, and transit activity resumes, we would then consider returning to the city council and resume what we were doing back in August of 2021, and have the city council have a discussion about resuming parking management when demand returns. And we're kind of looking at kind of a target of about maybe 50% occupancy of that parking lot. When we're starting to get close to that, maybe that would be an opportunity where there's enough activity that it could support the parking management ideas that we were talking about last year. And so, that's what our recommendation from a staff perspective would be if the council wished to introduce the ordinance this evening. And that could be in the fall, assuming that in the spring and summer, we're starting to get activity and see an uptick, that in the fall, we'd start looking at that again. So, that would be the next steps with parking management. Next slide, please. So, in summary, the staff recommendation tonight is two items. We recommend that the city council introduce an ordinance related to public parking to implement rules for public lots and structures, and to adopt a resolution updating and amending the fees related to parking violation at those city lots and structures, which, again, is just translating the existing fee study and fee structure over to the new code. And that concludes my presentation, Mr. Mayor, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Krisky. Councilmember Schultz, you want to start the discussion on this?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much. You know, when this had come to council back in August, I was apprehensive at the time of implementing parking management, and I still don't think that that would be appropriate at this time, but that's not what's before the council tonight. You know, I've read the ordinance, and it does make good in removing a lot of outdated language in our code, and it really sets the table to do what you've been working on a very long time, Mr. Mayor, and that is to be in the 21st century, ready to implement these kinds of programs when the demand does return. So, I don't have any questions. I then want to thank Mr. Krisky for being patient with me and bringing it back. Good presentation tonight. I'm comfortable moving the ordinance forward.
If there's no other discussion, go ahead and make the motion.
Okay, I'm assuming no other discussion. Okay, then in that case, I would move that we introduce an ordinance related to public parking, and that we separately adopt a resolution updating and amending fees related to parking violations.
Is there a second? Councilmember Springer?
I just have a question. So, I think it's important to let our residents know that really nothing is changing. No fees are changing, no parking violations are changing. Nothing is being changed right now. Parking management is not being implemented.
Yes, that is true.
Okay. I'll second.
All right. Motion, a second. Further discussion? Madam City Clerk?
Councilmember Schultz?
Yes.
Councilmember Springer?
Yes.
Councilmember Frutos?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Anthony?
Yes.
Mayor Telemontes?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, colleagues. The next report is the consideration of renaming the City of Burbank Verdugo Recreation Center in honor of former city manager Mary Alvert. Ms. Grace Coronado-Cervantes, administrative officer in the Parks and Recreation Department, please present this report, and welcome.
Thank you, and good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. Again, my name is Grace Coronado-Cervantes with the Burbank Parks and Recreation Department. If we can pull up the PowerPoint. Okay. Share my screen then. Okay, perfect. I'm happy to be here before you to provide a recommendation to approve renaming the Verdugo Recreation Center to the Mary Alvert Recreation Center. As noted in the staff report, second slide, please. The Parks and Recreation Board recommended that staff submit the naming of public facilities application nominating form for submission to the city council for consideration. Also highlighted in the staff report, there is a procedure to be followed when a request comes from a citizen or an individual. Next slide, please. To provide a basic overview of the procedure, there is an application window and a process that is required to be followed when submitting nominations for consideration. The city clerk receives a nomination and forwards it to the respective department and/or board for their recommendation to city council. Next slide, please. For example, if a citizen requested a renaming of the Stow Canyon Nature Center after someone, the city clerk would forward the request to the Parks and Recreation Board, and the board would provide the recommendation to city council. Alternatively, the city council may also take any other action they deem appropriate to dedicate, rename, or name a public facility. It is for this reason that I am presenting the Parks and Recreation Board's aforementioned recommendation. Next slide, please. Taking into consideration the impact that Ms. Alvert had on the city and the community, staff believes that the Verdugo Recreation Center is an appropriate public facility to be named honoring Ms. Alvert. As some may be familiar, Ms. Alvert is a lifelong resident and had a career working with the City of Burbank, which spanned over 38 years. Next slide, please. Ms. Alvert was a visionary. In 1991, Ms. Alvert was the first woman to hold the position of Parks and Recreation Director. From 1991 through 2000, and under her leadership, Ms. Alvert oversaw several capital improvement projects with broader reaching benefits to the Burbank community. Significant projects she oversaw included the construction of the Burbank Tennis Center, the roller hockey rink at Ralphway Park. Next slide, please. Maple Street Playground, Earthwalk Park. Next slide, please. Valley Skate Park, and Stow Canyon Nature Center. Additional projects she oversaw were the renovations and improvements of George Isaiah Park Ball Field, Burbank Center Stage, the Betsy Luki Creative Arts Center, Starlight Bowl, and Cambridge Park, Johnson Adult Center Edition, Robert Rose Park, and Providenceia Elementary School Soccer Field and Playground improvements. In 2003, Ms. Alvert was appointed city manager, again, the first woman to hold the position of city manager in Burbank's history. In February 2009, Ms. Alvert retired from the City of Burbank, but remains active by serving on the Board of Directors for the Family Service Agency and facilitates the Leadership Burbank Program. Ms. Alvert has always embodied true servant leadership, focusing on the growth and well-being of the Burbank community. This is evident by her continual recognition for her dedication to public service and her commitment to the community. Ms. Alvert was inducted in the Burbank Athletics Walk of Fame, awarded the Boys and Girls Club Golden Achievement Award, named Woman of the Year by State Senator Jack Scott in the Zonta Club, received the Burbank Temporary Eight Centers Top Award for Citizenship, honored by Woodbury University with the Movers and Shapers Award, and bestowed the Family Service Agency's Woman of Vision Award. I'd also like to add a few fun facts. Since Ms. Alvert's early childhood, Verdugo Park has been her lifelong neighborhood park. Not only did she grow up in a house down the street, she also currently resides a few short blocks away. She is also a frequent swimmer at the Verdugo Aquatic Facility, and she participates in swim classes and lap swim. Next slide, please. And now, following the protocol set forth by in the naming of public facilities ordinance, staff recommends that the city council approve renaming the Verdugo Recreation Center to the Mary Alvert Recreation Center, and make the findings required by Burbank Municipal Code Section 2-1-1804A. Notably, total cost to develop and finalize a design concept, fabricate, and install these new elements is estimated to be around $10,000. Next slide. This concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Thank you, Ms. Cervantes, for the report.
Thank you, Ms. Cervantes.
Colleagues, any questions, any comments? Councilmember Springer?
Thank you, Ms. Coronado-Cervantes. Questions, but I would like to...
There seems to be an echo. Go ahead. Councilmember Springer, try it again?
Yeah. I'll move that we name the Recreation Center Mary Alvert Recreation Center. Thank you.
Great. Is there a second? Councilmember Frutos? Seconds?
I'll second it. I've known Ms. Alvert for a very long time, and she definitely is very passionate about park and recreations, and, you know, I can speak for hours about her, you know, what she does in our city, but definitely, I'm very supportive of this agenda item. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I, too, will support this motion. Obviously, I have also known Ms. Alvert for a long, long time, and she has accomplished many things here in the community, not only within the city, but other nonprofits as well. So, we move it forward. All right. Madam City Clerk?
Councilmember Springer?
Yes.
Councilmember Frutos?
Yes, Madam City Clerk.
Thank you. And Councilmember Schultz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Anthony?
Before I vote yes on this, I'm just going to need a plaque from Ms. Alvert saying that the class of 2018 Leadership Burbank was the best class, so I'll expect that in the mail. Yes.
Mayor Telemontes?
Yes, Mr. Vice Mayor. It's in the mail.
Thank you.
Yes, I vote yes. Thank you very much. Congratulations, Ms. Alvert. Well deserved. The final report is the update on the Burbank Animal Shelter transitioning from the Police Department to the Parks and Recreation Department. Ms. Marissa Garcia, Parks and Recreation Director, please present the report, and welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Telemontes and council members. I'm Marissa Garcia with Parks and Recreation Department. Staff is before you this evening to share some exciting news about the Burbank Animal Shelter. Since 1955, the Burbank Animal Shelter has been operating under the Burbank Police Department. This past year, last year, at the direction of the city manager, staff was tasked with exploring a more contemporary model for the operation of the Burbank Animal Shelter. Consequently, the Parks and Recreation Department joined with the Burbank Police Department on reviewing this operation. I will now turn it over to Kristin Smith, Parks and Recreation Deputy Director, who will go over the results of our analysis and the upcoming transition of the Burbank Animal Shelter from the Burbank Police Department to Parks and Recreation.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia. Good evening, Mayor Telemontes, Vice Mayor, council members. Kristin Smith, Deputy Director of the Parks and Recreation Department. The Parks and Recreation Department, Burbank Animal Shelter, and the Burbank Police Department have been meeting since July 2021 to discuss and evaluate the feasibility of moving the Burbank Animal Shelter. After much review, we all agree it's in the best interest of the shelter to move the Park and Recreation, to move to the Park and Recreation Department to increase efficiency and transfer services to an area where they would better be served. At this time, I would like to share with you some of the benefits of this transition. The Park and Recreation Department manages and maintains multiple off-site facilities and can provide support to the Burbank Animal Shelter in line with other off-site facilities. The Park and Recreation Department can provide a different perspective of the Burbank Animal Shelter operation, focusing on enhancing community service such as animal companionship, education, animal care, spaying and neutering, and other aspects of responsible pet ownership, and promoting increased physical activity with pets. The Burbank Animal Shelter will have increased access to off-site community events to showcase animals for adoption. The Burbank Animal Shelter will have increased access to local community organizations and nonprofits to assist those in need through its newly formed association with the Parks and Recreation Department. The Parks and Recreation Department administers the Burbank Volunteer Program, and it can help secure community volunteers to support the Burbank Animal Shelter and the volunteers of the Burbank Animal Shelter's operations. The Burbank Animal Shelter and the volunteers of the Burbank Animal Shelter's programs and services will greatly benefit from the Park and Recreation Department's marketing efforts through the website, social media, e-newsletter, and printed materials such as the recreation guide. The Burbank Police Department will no longer be responsible for background screening of the volunteers of the Burbank Animal Shelter. All background screenings will be handled by the Burbank Volunteer Program staff. Burbank Animal Shelter employees will have additional advancement opportunities in the Parks and Recreation Department, and the Burbank Animal Shelter will benefit from additional grant opportunities available in the Parks and Recreation Department. The Burbank Animal Shelter will be instrumental in the success of the future Dick Clark Dog Park, and the Parks and Recreation Pilot Park Patrol Program can be modeled after the Burbank Animal Shelter's animal control enforcement, whereby animal control officers currently provide residents and visitors with an educational and enforcement presence throughout the community, including city parks. It will provide the animal control officers with the ability to spend more time in the field responding to calls for service, outreach and education, and evening patrols. Staff also discussed the potential challenges with this transition, as well as noting the functions that would need to remain within the Burbank Police Department to ensure that the Burbank Animal Shelter is able to continue its current operations. The Parks and Recreation Department has the Burbank Police Department's continued commitment to partner with the Burbank Animal Shelter to ensure that they are able to continue current operations and the customer service expectations for residents and the animals served at the shelter. Services such as dispatch, field support, and training will continue. The Burbank Animal Shelter will continue to provide support to the Burbank Police Department when needed, such as canine medical care, support when arrests and warrants are being served and animals are present. As part of the six-month review, staff developed a viable transition plan to strategically and seamlessly shift the Burbank Animal Shelter to the Parks and Recreation Department. It will consist of a two-phased approach. Next month, Phase One will roll out, whereby the Burbank Animal Shelter operations and supervision will partially transition from the supervision will partially transition from the oversight of the Burbank Police Department to the Parks and Recreation Department. The management staff from the Burbank Police Department and the Parks and Recreation Department will work closely together over the next few months to co-manage the Burbank Animal Shelter to ensure a smooth transition. During the upcoming fiscal year 2022 to 23 budget process, all financial accounts will be reassigned to the Parks and Recreation Department. And beginning on July 1, 2022, the Burbank Animal Shelter will be officially transitioned to the Parks and Recreation Department. Staff has concluded that it is in the best interest of the city and community to transition the Burbank Animal Shelter to the Parks and Recreation Department. This transition will create efficiencies in operations for the Burbank Animal Shelter and the Parks and Recreation, and open doors for enhanced community services. The Park and Recreation Department and the Burbank Animal Shelter are truly excited about this transition and partnership. Thank you. This concludes my presentation. I, along with representatives from the Burbank Police Department and the Burbank Animal Shelter, are present to answer any questions that you may have at this time. Thank you.
Thank you for your report. Colleagues, any questions, comments? Recommendation? Uh, Councilmember Springer?
Yes, thank you for your report, Ms. Smith. Are, are, will any jobs be affected?
Thank you, Councilmember Springer. No, no jobs will be affected. We actually, we're able to transition all of that directly over to the Parks and Recreation Department. We only have one position, that is a police technician position, that we will be changing the title to a Parks, a more suitable position, since it won't be under the Police Department anymore, to a senior clerk position.
Great, perfect, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Frutos?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. What type of outreach will you be doing, like say for the first sixty days, just to reassure the community of what staff is recommending, you know, and where we're moving this forward? Because this is a note and file report, but my biggest concern is how are you getting the message out to the community that loves the shelter and loves their animals? Because that's always been a big hot potato, because I remember working on this when I was in the Police Commission, going back to 2002. We've always had this discussion, so I understand, but my biggest concern is the residents, the people that love the shelter, how are you gonna get the message out there with the new changes and the new reasoning behind taking it from the Police Department to Park and Anybody?
So with Phase, thank, thank you, Councilmember Frutos. With the first transition, we'll work closely with our Public Information Office, along with our Park and Rec marketing, along with the Burbank Police Department, to make sure that we have a uniform message. Certainly, this transition is gonna take six months, and so, you know, the, it's not gonna be this immediate switch where the existing animal control officer vans that say the Police Department are gonna turn around and say City of Burbank. So it's still gonna say Police Department, and, and operationally, it's still gonna be under the Police Department for the next six months. So we will work on that uniform message to make sure that the community knows, you know, we've already met with the Board of the Volunteers of the Burbank Animal Shelter, and we'll continue to do outreach to our park board and also to the other, you know, community boards so that they're aware of this transition. And upon that kind of launch of July 1, 2022, we will make sure that we even have a bigger presence out there, but really, we hope the community doesn't even initially feel that change, right? That those, the operations and the, the services are all gonna maintain the same, and so they shouldn't really feel that shift. They're gonna still be able to go to the shelter and have that same interaction with shelter staff as they have before. Uh, we're hoping that when we work, you know, once they come over to us in, in July officially, we'll really be able to work with them on doing additional partnership events and outreach to the community and ways to raise revenue. So we really see it as a positive, a positive thing, but like I said, we'll work with our different, our different outreach services, like the Public Information Office, to make sure that that's a nice uniform message.
Alrighty, well, thank you for the update. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, Vice Mayor, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, thank you for that, that report, Ms. Smith. The number one concern that I'm hearing from residents if we do this transition is that if, if the Animal Shelter no longer has the backing of our Police Department, that the kinds of people who are prone to abusing animals and that kind of crimes are going to feel more free to do, you know, more of what they already do. Have we seen an increase in these kinds of abuses, these kinds of crimes, in other cities that have also done this kind of transition? Like, what do I tell my residents when they have those real fears?
So Vice Mayor, I'll, I'll take an answer, I'll take a stab at answering that, but also I'll certainly defer that to Captain Irving that's on the call. You know, we have, we have found that the shelters that have stayed within, that maybe have transferred from a Police Department to a civilian department, as long as they've maintained receiving the services from the Police Department, they haven't had any problem with anyone not respecting their authority or their inability to do their job. What was really important to us was that we still had that commitment from the Burbank Police Department at the same level of service that they've been providing to the shelter, and they've made that commitment to us. So I feel extremely confident that we are gonna be able to continue to be able to do the job that we have been doing out there with the same enforcement capabilities.
So this isn't a, we're not severing ties with the Police Department, it's, it's, we're still working with them on enforcement?
Certainly, it's still gonna be a partner, it's still gonna be a partnership, a partnership with that. You know, the animal control officers still have the same enforcement capabilities that they have under the Police Department, under the Parks and Recreation Department. We'll have to be making some changes to the Burbank Municipal Code that will be bringing me back to be able to do that, but they'll still be able to have that same authority.
Could I, could we hear from the captain just to understand, like, what that would look like in real time? How, how would it work?
Good evening, Travis Irving with the Police Department. So in addition to what Ms. Smith just shared, the truth is that the way it works now with the Animal Shelter, when there's criminal behavior, they generally write reports that come to the Police Department, they get assigned to a detective, does the follow-up and presents cases for prosecution when appropriate. That, that's not gonna end. The animal control officers also have the ability to write citations. There may be some changes to that, but I don't see that part going away, whether they are gonna be criminal citations or more civil in, in nature. They're still gonna have the ability to write citations, take criminal complaints, that will still come to the Police Department and still be investigated, you know, as appropriate, so that's not gonna change at all.
Okay, great, thank you. I appreciate you filling that center.
A pleasure.
Thank you. Anyone, any other questions? Go ahead and move this item. I know it's a note and file. Madam City Clerk?
Do, do we need any direction? Is that...
Do we need more? Let me, let me have a motion, please, in a second. Uh, Councilmember Springer?
I'll, I'll move to note and file.
Second.
Councilmember Springer?
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz?
Yes.
Councilmember Frutos?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Anthony?
Yes.
Mayor Telemontes?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Next item, it's time for brief council comments, including reporting on council committee assignments. Colleagues, who wants to... Councilmember Frutos?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Going back to Wednesday, January the 12th, I attended the Board of Library Trustees Meeting. Nothing to report back to my colleagues. Um, I also, on Thursday, January 13th, I attended the League of California Cities Committee Introduction Briefing. And then on Friday, the 14th, I attended the Cal Cities check-in with the liaison to the Public Policy Committee, and we talked about my thoughts regarding public safety as far as speeders, um, all the traffic safety issues that have been brought up to our, our attention, specifically on Amherst and Glen Oaks. So I definitely am, I'm voicing that up, up through the Cal, Cal Cities. And then I also talked about the Fire Department and looking at the next evolution of emergency medical service, the paramedics, who make sure that Burbank's got a voice at the table. Then on Sunday, January the 16th, I attended the Boys and Girls Club Building Dedication to the Liz Shapiro Building. And then on Tuesday, the 18th, since I sit on the American Public Power Association as a policymaker on the council, I represented our city on that. Nothing to report back, but it was more of a, of a think tank of my upcoming trip to Washington DC, beginning the first part of March, representing the city. And then on Wednesday, the 19th, I sit on the Los Angeles County Civil Brand Commission for Institutional Inspections. We had our meeting, and I'm still working regarding getting a policy for inmates that are pregnant and all the different issues that we need to update our, our policies for the inmates. And we're also looking at some racial tensions and allegations against deputies in the women's jail. Later on that evening, I attended the Police Commission Meeting. Nothing to report out, but I will be asking for an agenda item that came out of the Police Commission Meeting that I thought it should be come up to the council level. And then on Friday, the 21st, I had a Zoom meeting with four Metro staff members to give me their thoughts on the BRT busway and talk about the new idea they want to move forward, and I basically echoed what we discussed publicly, the five of us at the last open meeting, that we support mixed flow, signal prioritization for the bus, but it's very difficult to support giving designated bus lane, and that's how I left it with them. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Who's next? Anyone next? Uh, Councilmember Schultz?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be briefed. Uh, like Councilmember Frutos, I too was at the League of California Cities Introduction Briefing, related to my assignment to the Environmental Quality Policy Committee, really looking forward to the work that we'll be doing there this year. On Tuesday, January 18th, I had a meeting with the Executive Director of Haven Hills about domestic violence shelter resources as it pertains to the city of Burbank. Uh, Wednesday, January 19th, I, like Councilmember Frutos, attended the Police Commission Meeting. The only thing I would add is that there was a very informative presentation regarding Senate Bill Two, which relates to certification and decertification of peace officers. If you're so interested, you can go to the City Clerk's webpage and you can watch the recording back, and I thought it was a really excellent presentation. Uh, and lastly, yesterday, the 24th, I had a chance to attend a meeting between Assembly Member Friedman and Together We Can Burbank, a grassroots group, regarding a new piece of legislation that she's gonna be pushing related to radar camera speed enforcement. I don't believe it has a bill number yet, but when it does, I, I do intend to ask for an agenda item at that time. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Uh, next, Councilmember Springer?
Yes, thank you. I met with Michael Schneider of Streets for All, and we had a conversation about the BRT, Bus Rapid Transit. I attended the Cal Cities Housing Community and Economic Development Kickoff Meeting, Policy Meeting, Parks and Recreation Board. Um, I had a meeting with, a Zoom with Ms. Nikki Perez, RE a Green New Deal for Burbank. I attended last night the Burbank Transportation Commission Meeting, and the, last night on the agenda were high-speed rail and a neighborhood protection plan discussion for the Rancho Providencia neighborhood, and I attended the Burbank Human Relations Council Meeting, and also the Race Relay Meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Vice Mayor?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the 16th, I attended the Liz Shapiro Building Dedication for the Boys and Girls Club, the new building that they have on Angelino. It was a great turnout, a lot of familiar faces, and they're doing some really incredible work there, the Boys and Girls Club. On the 24th, uh, Mr. Mayor, you and I attended a meeting with Assembly Member Laura Friedman, talked about our goals, the things that we need here in the city, and hopefully that'll be expressed at the state level, we'll start seeing some bills come our way that we can get behind enthusiastically. Um, and for the last two weeks, my son has been in school, and we have been taking advantage of the Burbank Unified Testing Facilities. They're, you know, rotating around, there are different schools at different times, so you gotta kinda like, it's, it's a little bit of whack-a-mole finding which one is open, uh, but hopefully with our moving forward, with Curative and the Burbank Unified School District keeping up their end, uh, there's gonna be a lot of availability for testing, and it's pretty easy. Once you, once you figure out the site, they, they move quick and it gets done, and, you know, it's, it's really interesting to see how well we, the, the school district is keeping tabs. We get informed if there's any, anyone who is even remotely affected or, or infected, and they send out alerts, they call the, the families. Um, so I'm grateful that they're staying up on that, so, uh, thank you. That's, that's it for me.
Thank you. Well, I'll weigh in as far as what, a few items that I attended. I attended the Cultural Arts Commission Meeting, it was a virtual meeting. Uh, at that time, it was mentioned that Doug Fowler has been promoted, so he will no longer assist the Cultural Arts Commission. Uh, everybody was very disappointed in the commission because he's been very helpful, very proactive, and now he got promoted because he's been doing such a great job, that he's moving on to a different area of the Parks Department. I was not able to attend the Boys and Girls Club Building Dedication because we were celebrating my grandson Shane's sixth birthday that day, so as a Papa, I had to go to the birthday party. I was hoping they'd get over early so I could run over to the Boys and Girls Club, but that didn't happen. Uh, so happy birthday, Shane, six years old already. Uh, I also attended virtually the Los Anzal Board Meeting, and I was invited by the Providencia Elementary Principal to attend their PTA meeting, virtually. Uh, they were reviewing school safety plan, uh, so I was there with, for that as well. Very entertaining, very, uh, very moving forward in regards to the elementary school itself, uh, they moved forward, and it's, it's pleasant to see that they've done, they've done a great job moving forward with the safety plan. Uh, let's see, I attended the Cal Chamber of Commerce Board Meeting, a virtual board meeting. Uh, this is attended monthly by the mayor, uh, very informative. Uh, I'm looking forward to working with Ms. Kizer and also the chairman, uh, you know, he's a, he's a great guy. Looking forward to building a great relationship between the city and the chamber. Uh, let's see here, I met with a, a candidate that's gonna be running for this district's senate seat, California senate seat. Uh, his name is Daniel Hertzberg. I'm sure you recognize the Hertzberg, that's his dad. His dad is terming out at the senate site, so apparently his son has been under his wings for many, many years and knows a lot of the ins and outs, so he's throwing his hat in the ring. Uh, so we'll see how that happens moving forward. And like it was mentioned by the Vice Mayor, myself and him, and the Vice Mayor, we attended a virtual meeting, Zoom meeting with the Assembly Member to discuss future items of interest to the city of Burbank. Thank you, that is all. Uh, now's the time for the introduction of additional agenda items. Do members of the council have any items to introduce? Councilmember Frutos?
Yes, thank you. Uh, Mr. City Manager, I'd like to see a report back to the council regarding our human resources as we're adding all this new development. Um, I'd like to see how is our workforce looking, whether it's police, fire, public works? I wanna know for 2035, with the addition of all this mandated development, ADUs, is our city, you know, do we need to obviously increase our human resources? I'd like to know what, what you're looking at by 2035 as far as our workforce for all city departments.
All right, great, thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Mr. City Manager, last year, we had a number of agenda items that we voted as a council to delay discussing until the new year, and it's January. Uh, is there, could we get a report back on what those were? I know off the top of my head, there was like, see, uh, uh, a disc, um, an investigation to see if we could do our own health department, there was some, uh, I believe the minimum wage was discussed, there was a number of items that we were like, oh, let's wait till 2022. Could we go back and just get a list of all that stuff?
Uh, we, we could certainly provide you our current follow-up list, so that, that has some, um, you could see which items have aged and which ones haven't, so if there's a interest in redoing that, we try to prioritize that as best we can, so we bring to you the most, um, highest priority items, so we always try to work through that list, but we could provide that as, as part of one of your packets.
I appreciate that.
Okay, anyone else? All right, thank you very much. Uh, we now...